I welcome you to the forum. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority was founded in 1913 on the campus of Howard University. Since our first act of public service, by the way, which was participating in the suffrage movement, we have been involved in voting rights and education. We provide an extensive array of public service initiatives in the northwest suburban area involving our five-point programmatic thrust that includes educational development, economic development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement. We are happy to partner with the League of Women Voters in hosting this forum today. The League of Women Voters' purpose is to promote responsibility through the informed and active participation of citizens. Providing this forum enables members of the community to become informed about the issues facing the community and candidates running for the office. For office, and they are pleased to offer you this service. During today's presentation, all audience members will be muted. It is suggested that you be in the gallery view mode. We will not be using the chat or raise hand feature. All questions for the candidates have been submitted by the audience at the time of registration or from local nonpartisan organizations. Both the moderator and the timer have been trained by the League of Women Voters. I am now pleased to introduce moderator for today's forum, Tamara Butler. Ms. Butler is currently an assistant principal with the Rockford Public School System. Ms. Butler is a member of Sigma Gamma Rho Sorority Incorporated. She is an immediate past president and currently the conference development chair for the Illinois Association of School Social Workers. She also serves as a secretary of the Rockford, Illinois NAACP branch and a member of the United Way of Rock Valley. Ms. Butler, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Kraus. There we go. Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Kraus. It is my pleasure to be with you this morning to moderate this candidate's forum. Let me take a few minutes to explain the format and the rules of the forum. All of the candidates were contacted by mail, email, and phone and have agreed to abide by the ground rules provided by the League of Women Voters. They are as follows. Candidates have drawn numbers to determine speaking order. The moderator will rotate this order during the forum for questions. Each candidate will have two minutes for their opening statement. Next, each candidate will have one minute to answer questions. The moderator will repeat the question if necessary. If needed, a rebuttal may be requested. Each candidate may use a maximum of two rebuttals. Rebottals will be timed and limited to 30 seconds each. And at the end, each candidate will have one-minute closing statement. Candidates, as stated before, will be given one minute. They will be given 30 seconds and 15-second warnings, so please quickly complete your thoughts before you see the stop card. The limits will be enforced out of respect for all candidates. It is important, again, for me to stress that the time limit will be enforced out of respect for all candidates. Questions have been submitted by the audience members at the time of registration and by local civic organizations. Each question will be answered by all candidates as time allows. Today's forum will be taped for League of Women Voter Youth and Educating the Public. A video of this forum will be available early next week on the League of Women Voters of the Palatine Area in the Schaumburg Hoffman Estates Alumni Chapter website. The candidates have agreed to this. No voice, image, or other duplication of the forum may be used by a candidate's representative or campaign in any campaign advertising. Delta Sigma Theta and League of Women Voters claims copyright ownership of all recordings or transcripts produced from this event and reserves the right to publicize this forum. To view this forum, please go to the League website. Today, we will hear from candidates hoping to represent the Schaumburg District Library Township. We have seven candidates vying for four seats. With us today on the ballot are Carol Pye, David Joen, Erin Flanagan Davies, Anita Fort Scott, Emily Gilbert, and William Olson. Amy Mueller is unable to be with us today. She has submitted a video statement that will be played at the end of today's forum when the other candidates have completed their closing statements. I want to thank all of you for your participation, and we will begin with your two-minute opening statement. By the number drawn prior to our agreement on Thursday evening, Carol Pye will go first.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. I love that Delta Sigma Theta is a chapter with a heart. Thank you so much for hosting and moderating, and congratulations on your 30th anniversary. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for co-hosting and for being a great source of information. And thank you to all watching. I am Carol Pye, a 35-year resident, patron, and community leader. I am a huge advocate of the library and use it extensively for my editor-public relations role within the Schaumburg Township Historical Society. The library has been essential in my son's education and our family's quality of life for decades. My background is in journalism, and I studied and thrived in Greater London and experienced many cultures. My passion is to educate, inspire, and foster a lifelong love of learning in neighbors of every age and stage of life. I have great joy in communicating multiculturally and multi-generationally in our beautifully diverse community. I am a Kids Hope mentor at John Muir Literacy Academy, which is a partnership with Willow Creek Care Center and District 54. I see firsthand that at-risk and vulnerable students can thrive with fun ways to learn and lots of kindness, patience, and love and encouragement. I have also mentored D-211 students and young adult women, and I have become a legal guardian of a first-generation Asian-American Schaumburg High student, and he is now a bonus son. I am a champion for all residents and especially women, children, and families. The library was already a place of refuge for my foster son who, before he became homeless. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, David Joen, you have two minutes.
Good morning. I'm David Joen. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for their continued service in bringing attention to local elections and providing forum for candidates to address the public. As a resident of the township for over 35 years, I've long recognized the value of our library. The programs and resources it provides are very much part of the identity of the community served, as are the facilities that call Schaumburg, Hanover Park, and Hoffman Estates home. Since being elected has been an honor to serve on the board that oversees the mission of the library and helps satisfy the interests of over 130,000 residents of the township. Working with my fellow board members and a dedicated and professional staff in fulfilling the goals of our mission statement has been thoroughly enjoyable throughout my term. Board members have the responsibility of ensuring our facilities are maintained properly, policies are reviewed and revised diligently, the director evaluated, and finances kept sound. We also advocate for our library and help promote its role in our community. I've always been proud of what our library does for the township, but considering the challenges of the past year and how well our library responded to the disruptions caused by the pandemic has made me all the more passionate about being part of the group that I'm sure will sustain its success. We maintained compensation and benefits to our employees during a period of great uncertainty. The board allowed access to online materials to any household served by Districts 54 or 211. Our library also joined many others in becoming a fine-free library while also still providing extensive programming. I, along with my fellow trustees, reviewed and revised a variety of policies such as purchasing, investment, borrowing, privacy, and our code of conduct. In 2020, our library was named by the Library Journal a five-star library, one of just 16 libraries in Illinois to receive such a rank. I'd like to think I had a small role in helping us achieve such outstanding recognition and hope to help it do so again.
Thank you. Now, Erin Flanagan Davies.
Good morning. I'm Erin Flanagan Davies, and I'd like to thank the Schaumburg Hoffman Estates Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc. and the League of Women Voters in the Palatine Area for hosting this candidate forum. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm a retired 31-year IT professional. 28 of those years were with Allstate Insurance in Northbrook. I moved to Schaumburg in 1989 with my daughter because of the schools, the Park District, and the Library District. Since retiring, I've been actively volunteering throughout the community, with the latest being a trustee of the Schaumburg Township District Library. I was appointed in November of 2019 to finish out a one-and-a-half-year trustee term. It's been a very busy 16 months on the board for me with the hiring of a new library director, the pandemic, and all of its challenges, such as approving new policies and procedures regarding the safety of employees and patrons, the moving of all the programs online, curbside and contactless pickup, approving new 24-hour locker pickup kiosks at all locations, and improving more funding for digital downloads of books, movies, magazines, TV streaming, expanding our Wi-Fi to the parking lots, and providing laptop kits to check out, which provides some type of digital equity for our community, as well as supporting our staff by ensuring no furloughs and layoffs and providing safety protection protocols for patrons and staff alike. We remodeled the first floor. We approved a responsible budget to meet the needs of our community, all the while giving back a $1.5 million real estate tax abatement for homeowners. We continue to approve spending to support technology, and we strive to serve the evolving needs of all members of Schaumburg Township. I am proud to be on the board, and I hope to continue for a four-year term. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Emily Gilbert.
Hi, I'm Emily Gilbert. I'm a librarian for Rasmussen University. I have 10 years' experience in academic librarianship, and I hold a graduate degree in library and information science. I live in Hoffman Estates with my family. I've been a frequent library user since I moved to the Schaumburg area over 10 years ago, and as a parent, I use it more than ever. I believe I can be an asset to the board because I bring with me the perspective of a professional librarian who understands the context for key library issues, and I have spent my career learning how to best connect people to information resources. I feel strongly about the importance of libraries, and I hope to be an advocate for the community in keeping our library one of the best in the state. These are some issues I'm passionate about. Awareness: making sure our community members are aware of the library and all it can do for them and are using it to its full potential. Representation: it is vital that the books and other materials at the library accurately depict our diverse community and allow for learning about other identities and cultures in a meaningful way. Equitable access: everyone in our community should be able to get the information that they need, regardless of race, ethnicity, physical ability, income, age, education, or other factors. And finally, information literacy. Living in such a fast-paced digital world means that it is crucial for people to know how to find, use, and evaluate information. Most of us are bombarded by questionable information sources every day, and information literacy is the key to finding useful and accurate information. I work with students and faculty on information literacy every day at my job, and I feel it is an essential service that libraries can offer their patrons. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and Delta Sigma Theta Sorority for organizing this event, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. I do have to apologize. When I looked at my list, I realized that Anita Fort Scott was to go before you, Ms. Gilbert. I apologize, Ms. Fort Scott, for that. You can do your intro now.
That's all right, Tamara. Thank you very much. And thank you also to the League of Women Voters and the Delta Sigma Theta Alumni Chapter for your time today and for organizing this forum. So I have a great admiration for Schaumburg Township District Library that started for me when I was a very young child, and my mother would take me there as I was growing up and doing my schoolwork, and then into my college years of doing my reports and such and studying. So I really have a great admiration for the library, and that's one of the key things that a trustee really needs to hold dear is that we have an advocacy heart and that we have a mind for the admiration and keeping that constantly in the forefront for our patrons. But our materials and services and programs that we provide to our community are so important, and more so important just in this past year that we've seen, again, as other trustees and other candidates had mentioned, the turmoil caused by the pandemic. But we survived and thrived, and we pivoted and made much better use of our online materials, and opening up for District 211 and 54 students and their families was really something to be proud of. So our library district consists of three buildings located in Schaumburg, Hoffman Estates, and Hanover Park. And you may not know this, but I did have a hand in building the Hanover Park Library Branch 15 years ago. So I've been quite a big part of this organization for many, many years, and it's a volunteer position that I hold dear, and I hope to be able to be voted in again as a trustee so that I can continue the good work for the people that we serve, which is over 130,000 residents living in portions of six communities in our area. So, but mostly, we have a duty towards fiscal responsibility. And just as the other candidates had mentioned earlier, we did approve a $1.5 million abatement, which had not been done in the history of the library before, and we really hope to continue to do great things for our community in the future. And as a trustee, I would be honored to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, William Olson.
Thank you, Moderator Butler. Good morning to everyone. I'd like to speak about our political circumstances, what I think of them and how they might be redressed. I'd like to begin by way of a thought experiment. Imagine a presidential election between an old white patriarch with indications of senility and a despotic bigot with indications of brain damage. Imagine also, closer to home, an intergenerational incumbency and decades of uncompetitive local elections. Imagine a boorish, white matriarchy of seven persons presiding a quaintly suburban unit of government in the northwest suburbs of Chicago. That is, imagine a library board of one David and six Karens. Imagine one of these Karens, on an election day in November of last year, assembled on behalf of a Republican candidate, yet who would phone the police repeatedly when a constituent petition, by the light of day and subject to the public's glare, for a dress of a grievance. One might describe such an act as an exercise or an indiscretion of white privilege, or one might dispense with colors of euphemism and call it apropos, an act born of prejudice and ignorance. On a much lighter note, and in hopes we might not suffer any more of my opponents patting themselves and each other on the backs for the next few minutes, I should share I'm a candidate also for the 118th U.S. Congress and that I intend to petition for placement on a partisan ballot next spring. I have some grievances with the governance of a library, moreover, and some fresh ideas for it. In sum, I'm gracious for the invitation to discuss these and other political circumstances of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let's move on to the questions. Please remember that you have one minute to answer. We will follow as we have practiced on Thursday evening. And so for question one, Mr. David Joen will begin. So the question here is, do you have a current library card? And when have you most recently used the library, and what was it for?
I do have a current library card, and I've had a library card as long as I can remember. I moved in, with my family, we moved into Hanover Park in 1973, and I've basically lived in the area ever since, except for briefly living in Chicago and during my time in college. What I've used my library card for most recently is books. Checked out a great book about China by Michael Wood, DVDs, latest album by Tame Impala, and of course, plenty of resources available through Canopy, Hoopla, the Libby app. I would say I use my library card on probably three, four times a week to help myself, to provide materials for my family, or to help my students.
Thank you. Erin Flanagan Davies.
Thanks. Hi. Yes, I've been a cardholder with the Schaumburg Township District Library since my daughter and I moved into Schaumburg in 1989. It was really one of the first things I did after unpacking is to, I took her to the library, and we got our cards because we really use it weekly. And while she was growing up and going to school, we lived right, I was so happy when the new central library was built, the new building, because we lived right behind that. So we've been using it all the time. I use it monthly, actually, more now since the pandemic because I bought a Kindle, and now I can download everything. And there's so much material. There's books, magazines, movies. You can even get Acorn TV for free, The Wall Street Journal and The New York Times. It saves a ton of money. I am also doing French language learning, just to try to, you know, keep sharp and supplement high school, right? So I use it all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Anita Fort Scott.
Hi there. Yes, as I mentioned before, I've been a library user since a very young child, and my mother would take me to the previous main building, and I would be downstairs in the children's area, and if anyone remembers, the Gingerbread House. That's where I did a lot of my early literacy learning. And since having my card and my children, as well as they grew up in the area, I use my library card many, many times each week, either for checking out books and materials and picking them up either at our main location or in the new lockers that we have. But I also very frequently use our online streaming platforms, and then I also register and participate in the programs that we have to offer. So I'm very happy and proud to be a Schaumburg Township District Library cardholder.
Thank you. Emily Gilbert.
I guess, as a librarian, it's probably not a surprise that I've been a big library user my whole life. I started as a child in my hometown library at Algonquin, and I actually went to the teen programming so much that the teen librarian at the Algonquin Area Public Library District became my mentor while I was in library school myself. And then I have been using the Schaumburg Library ever since moving to the area. My daughter is four, and she just completed the 1001 Books Before Kindergarten program. A lot of those books came from the library, and I'm an avid reader myself. Last year, I hit 36 books, I think, in 2020. A lot of those came from the library. We also, my husband and I use the database logins, like consumer reports, before making any kind of home purchase. And we do streaming video from Hoopla and things like that. So yeah, I'm a very active user.
Thank you. And William Olson.
Yes, thank you. I don't believe this is an appropriate question to ask trustees to a library. So let me say this. When one glimpses clearly the underwhelming efficiencies of any unit of government, one is rendered invariably aghast. Our library curates electronically minutes of its board's actions. One may find there a record of every decision in the last six years in the form of a roll call and a vote made on behalf of the people of the township. One will find as well, a slothful habit adhering unanimity. I submit that no government, no matter its charter, may function properly without dissent and deliberation. Bills, bids, bid waivers, privacy policy, safety protocols, the motions have carried unanimously. The record of these trustees, I submit, are heaped in a fawning appreciation for each other and the trite spectacles of tenure awards for five years, 10 years, 15 years. The later the case, the more it seems a long time to presume there's no one who's better in town.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Thank you. Next, we have Carol Pye.
Hi, I love my library card. It is a passport to the world. It was more important to get my son's a library card than their driver's license. And your question about the most recent use, I have about six books on my coffee table right now, physical books, but I also do a lot of online things. And I enjoyed the fireside chat with Dr. Eve Ewing, a social justice expert and a marvelous book author. She is award-winning, and I enjoyed that. I've attended other webinars, and I subscribe to magazines and all the forms of social media, and I'm very excited about the Comic-Con program coming up and even a COVID-19 presentation. So there are so many things. It's not just a tangible book. It's online services and programs and expanding our minds for a lifelong love of learning. And I, too, have used.
Thank you, Ms. Pye.
Thank you.
All right. Our next question, and we will start with Erin Flanagan Davies answering this next question. It's a multi-tiered question as well. But why are you running for this office, whether reelection or election for the first time? Is there a particular issue that is motivating you to run? If so, what is it?
Thank you, Tamara. Why am I running right now? Well, as I said before in my opening statement, I was appointed about a year and a half ago, and I really see the value of being on the board. And there are so many things that people do not understand about this volunteer position, where there are policies and procedures and budgets. And I come from a corporate background, and that's what I did for, you know, as an IT professional, as a manager, and as a leader. So I can offer my perspective, and I can offer best practices and things that I know that can help our district. And when we're vetting, you know, we're vetting contracts or we're going through to hire a new director of the library, I think my background really will stand out and has stood out, and I can offer more in the next four years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Anita Fort Scott, please.
Yes, thank you very much. I am running because, as a library trustee, I have found a very fulfilling way to give back to the community that I grew up in, and I love so much. And being trusted by the voters time and time again gives me the strength and perseverance to be the very best trustee possible, especially during the past years, we all mentioned, about the changes we faced through the pandemic. So we have so much more to do for our community through the library in the coming years, and I'd be honored again to be re-elected as a library trustee. One of the major issues that we are always keeping an eye on is, of course, understanding the hardships of our constituents, of our towns and our residents. And so we really take a good look at our fiscal responsibilities. As I mentioned before, we did have a current fiscal year budget, which was approved and had more than a 5% reduction of initial requests and overall expenditures. So we are really looking for ways to weeding out anything that is unnecessary and unneeded, but very beneficial in other ways.
Thank you, candidate Fort Scott. Next, Emily, candidate Emily Gilbert.
Moderator Butler, rebuttal, please.
Yes, our timer, are you prepared to time the rebuttal? Okay, go ahead, candidate William Olson.
My opponents boast of marginal cost-cutting and tax abatement as though they are gestures of charity or managerial marvel, and they indulge a pathetic boosterism as it relates to fees. In contradistinction, my objectives are far more optimistic and ambitious than theirs. I envision municipal collaborations to redevelop the areas of vehicular flow and expand the library's footprint to include outdoor gathering stations and an amphitheater. There is sufficient space also to plant a botanic garden, which is an amenity to great libraries and joy.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Candidate Emily Gilbert, will you now answer question two that was asked of the prior candidates?
Yes, thank you. I have been wanting to find ways to get more involved in my community after having been, I call myself a recovering shy person, but I had wanted to get more involved, and the library seemed like a natural fit for my talents with my experience as a librarian and education in library science. The issue that particularly motivates me is equitable access. So I think that it's very important that the library district provides resources and access to those resources equitably to all of the residents in the library district. Finding and retrieving information is the backbone of a free and educated society, and not everyone has the equipment to be able And not everyone has the equipment to be able, or the skills to be able to find and use and evaluate information. And this disproportionately affects racial and ethnic minorities, older adults, people with disabilities, people experiencing poverty. And public libraries have a responsibility to reach out to those communities and make sure they're getting the access that they need.
Thank you, candidate Gilbert. And now candidate Olson.
Yes, thank you, moderator Butler. I'm standing as an expression of speech, powers adhering speech, petition, assembly. I submit none of my opponents, with perhaps one exception, hasn't been corrupted by years of undeliberated, uninterrogated and unanimous votes. I hold no ill will toward the other candidates on personal grounds, yet on grounds they consented to exclude me under threat of arrest from a library. I say, a government which treads on rights of speech, assembly, petition and privacy invites a public whipping. These candidates suppress an enormous contempt for those who dare critique the governance of a library, yet a Republican polity shall speak and republish petitions for the resignations of these so-called trustees and veritable conceits of democratic expression, meanwhile language.
Thank you, candidate Olson. And now candidate Pye.
Sorry about that. I am running for trustee for a few good reasons. I am a dedicated community leader and I love to add value to people and places. That's a great paycheck for me and I'm a huge advocate. And I know firsthand the necessity of library, the library for families, students, seniors and those needing help with literacy and learning. I offer the board a solid community leadership background and proven communication skills multigenerationally and multiculturally. I want to keep the library fiscally responsible and prepared for the generations ahead. And the library has been essential to my son's education from preschool through college and now as young adults and becoming parents. It is foundational for education and connection. It offers so much more than books and movies.
Thank you, candidate Pye. Next, candidate Johnin. John, excuse me.
Johnin.
Johnin, thank you, sorry.
As a teacher, as a, as a coach, as a Boy Scout leader, we push civic engagement. It's something that we strive to instill in the people, you know, the younger generation. And that certainly has always been one of my focuses in terms of why run for a position within government. To help teach civic engagement, to help show other people that they have a role, they have a voice within our community. Certainly also to help maintain an amazing institution, an institution that is 50 years old and has given back so much to our community. And in terms of issues, certainly helping, as a teacher again, helping students acquire and have access to materials is certainly a priority of mine.
Thank you, candidate Johnin. The next question, which will be answered first by candidate Anita Ford Scott. The question is, voters are weary of candidates that run for office such as library board as a means to advance their own political careers. In order to ensure that you view the library board as a commitment to community service rather than a stepping stone to higher elected office, will you pledge to serve your full term before running for your next office? Candidate Anita Ford Scott.
Thank you, Tamara. This is an easy question for me as I am someone who earlier, many years ago, also ran for a different office. Absolutely, I will, I will guarantee that I will fulfill my four-year term as a Schaumburg Township District Library trustee, as I have from the very first moment that I was elected over 15 years ago. So this is something that I hold very near and dear to my heart. I put a lot of time and effort into making sure that everything that is needed to know and learn about in each of our board meetings and in our committee meetings is something that I dedicate time to. So absolutely, I will definitely serve out my four-year service time for this. So thank you for that question.
Thank you. Next, candidate Emily Gilbert.
Thank you. Yes, if elected, I would absolutely serve my full four-year term. I don't have any higher political ambition. I'm not looking to get into the State House or anything like, or Congress or anything like that. I, this is my passion is libraries. It's what I do for work. It's a cornerstone of my personal life as well and it's something that I care a lot about and have put a lot of time educating myself in the issues surrounding libraries. So this is why I'm here. I've shown my dedication toward, I ran for this office in 2019. I have been going to library board meetings for over three years. This is what I'm here to do is to serve my community on the library board. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate William Olson.
Yes, thank you, moderator Butler. I can warrant that I'll finish out a four-year term whether I'm elected to the US Congress or not. They're incompatible offices by my measure. Emily, I find it very curious you purport not to have political ambitions.
Thank you, candidate Olson. Thank you.
I don't, I haven't had my minute. I haven't yielded the balance of my time. I find it curious that another candidate would purport not to have political ambitions. One of the candidates stood for the State House a number of years ago. Candidate Gilbert has boasted of an endorsement by the Secretary of State of Illinois. The latter whom I should mention does not reside in Schaumburg Township, to my knowledge, and who for decades has amused himself teaching children to bounce. So yes, I will fulfill a four-year term to the library if elected. I'll be one vote in dissent of seven by my measure, yet I believe the people of Schaumburg Township deserve it.
Thank you, candidate Olson. And next.
Can I have a rebuttal, please?
Yes. Are you prepared for the timing? Yes, okay, go ahead, candidate Gilbert.
Thank you. I was endorsed by the Secretary of State as he cares deeply about libraries and serves as our state librarian. That doesn't mean I have any further political ambition. I was happy to receive his endorsement, but I assure you, I am not looking to run for any higher political office. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Gilbert. And now candidate Carol Pye.
Hi. Of course I would serve a full term. I love people. I want to serve people. I want to be a public servant. This takes a lot of time, energy and enthusiasm. I attend board meetings also and I'm aware of current events and issues. And I desire to serve a four-year term. And the library has four values, service, trust, dedication and leadership. So yes, I would do that.
Thank you. And now candidate Johnin. Johnin, excuse me.
All right. Yeah, certainly. I absolutely will fulfill my, my four-year term as trustee before even considering any other future political career. I have no further political aspirations at this time. If I were to have any political aspirations, I would know one thing that I've learned quite a bit from serving on the library board in terms of how to manage an institution the size of the Schaumburg Library. Thank you.
Thank you. And now candidate Erin Flanagan Davies.
Thank you. No, I have no plans to run for any office ever. I am running for the library board because that's the way I can volunteer to be on the library board. I mean, I applied for the position when it was posted and I was appointed. This is not my natural habitat. So I really am learning a lot. I am running because I want to be part of this great board that I, all the people on it, I respect. I respect our library director and I respect what goes on in the Schaumburg District Library system. I have the time, the desire and the talent to volunteer. And my heart is in this next four years if I get elected and that's where I'll be.
Thank you. Our next question.
Rebuttal, moderator Tamara Butler.
Yes, candidate Olson, you can have a rebuttal. Are you prepared, time, a timer? Yes. Are you prepared for the rebuttal, Tony? Okay, all right. Go ahead, candidate Olson.
One of my opponents who purports to be very interested in the governance of the library is the son of a former trustee who served for decades. And the idea that fresh ideas might come of this so-called trustee, I find laughable. I believe all, all the incumbents have boasted publicly and he praises on each other for hiring executive directors, for reducing, for abating taxes, yet the library board failed.
Thank you. It's president. Thank you, candidate Olson. Thank you for your rebuttal. All right, our next question, and we are getting close to time here. What, and our question would begin with candidate Gilbert. What is the most important issue facing the library district and how do you intend to address it? And be as specific as possible with your one minute. Candidate Gilbert.
Thank you very much. I do feel that equitable access is, I know I've said this before, but I think it's extremely important and has only been shown more clearly in the time of the pandemic. There have been people in our community who have been cut off from access when the library was closed. People did not have, may not have access to good computers at home or broadband internet. I think it's really wonderful that the library started offering laptop kits, which include a laptop, a mouse and Wi-Fi hotspot already loaded with different programs on the laptop. I think that's a wonderful way to reach out to those members of the community and get them the access they need. I would like to work with the board to find other ways to reach out to those areas of our community and ensure that they have what they need to get the information they need for various parts of their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. And now candidate Wilson, I mean, sorry, excuse me, candidate William Olson.
I think one of the most important items is the library's privacy policy. They passed this derelict board, a policy in haste late last year, which admits, among other things, of sharing with police, video surveillance, electronic surveillance without a warrant. It is a creeping violation of the Fourth Amendment. It's astounding that these trustees would stand by such a policy, yet they do. The library needs to reimagine how it serves a community quarantined by public health measures and divided by its political sensibilities. Rather than sending persons across town to a drive-in theater, for example, something might be done to make use of common green space or reclaim space abandoned by the library's neighbors. Couple important matters, I believe.
Okay. Thank you, candidate Olson. And now candidate Pye.
Okay. I'm really grateful with the labor, libraries handling of the COVID-19 crisis. Continuation to adhere to that is, is still ongoing and I really appreciate that. I also think an additional need is assessing our, the demographics and the residents of our, of our community. I am aware of requests from people who would like Gujarati language materials. I'm aware of some seniors who would like additional handicap parking. So I know that there are ongoing plans to always assess patrons' needs and services.
Thank you. Candidate Johnin.
I think still the priority in terms of issues that the library has to address is safety, is making sure that the staff is safe and that the use of our facilities is safe for patrons, without a doubt. Other issues, definitely understanding the demographic changes within our community and even maybe more so due to the pandemic are the financial strains that have been placed on members of our community. So in order to maybe help solve some of those challenges is to help build more job and educational supports within our library. We already have great resources available, but certainly that is something that we could consider when we get into our second floor room remodel is to create something more of a, of a business center for people as we kind of, you know, come back out of this financial setback, to say the least. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Erin Flanagan Davies.
Hi. My top issue, and I brought it up at last month's board meeting, is supporting and championing digital equity in our community. We have to have it in order to serve everyone equitably and fairly. It's not nice to have, it's essential. And the pandemic has really pointed that out. So I mentioned that Congress was looking at a, making internet affordable and that just passed recently. So at Monday's meeting, I was going to bring up the fact that we, we should probably do some outreach to our community for letting people know about this $3.2 billion government program. A quarter of national adults don't have broadband. And if there's something we can do locally, I feel that it's up to the library to be aware of it and champion it and perhaps direct people to be able to get the tablet or computer or discount, whatever they need, and then also get this $50 a month broadband per household.
Thank you. Thank you, candidate Flanagan Davies. Next, candidate Anita Ford Scott.
Yes, thank you very much. I agree with everyone except for one here about the concerns of our future in the library and what issues are most important. But I'd like to point out the one that I always keep an eye on and find that is something ongoing is our facilities and our buildings and the maintenance of them. All of our buildings see usually more than a million people coming through them every single year. And that's a lot of wear and tear on our floors, on our equipment, on our tables and chairs. Every, every door that opens has a lifetime span. And so in order to keep our facilities running optimally, we do have a very diligent building and facilities team that monitors those and then gives us recommendations to make sure that every single time a patron walks through the doors, that they are safe and comfortable in a, in an environment where they can learn and be free to read or explore however they wish. So most important to me is our building and facilities at this point.
Thank you. As we approach the end of our time, we will go ahead and move with our closing statements at this time. And so our closing statements, we will start with candidate William Olson.
Thank you, moderator Butler. I'd like to thank everyone who organized and participated in our forum and to request additionally that everyone enjoy, to the extent they're able, a humorous parable. An American politician visited an eye doctor in November of 2020. The politician presented with blurred and double vision and complained his golf game had been severely impaired. But when the politician cried, "Doctor, this handicap is causing me the most compromising of gestures." The eye doctor became incredulous and asked, "How do you mean compromising?" And the politician answered, "Well, I used to raise a toast to only a few members of my party. Yet these days, my vision has become so poor, so terribly poor, I find myself raising toasts to many members of both parties." And the eye doctor said, "You desperately need glasses."
Thank you. Thank you, candidate Olson. And next, candidate Pye.
Yes, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak. I am so proud of our library and how it's come through this pandemic, just beautifully creating even more opportunities for everybody to enjoy. I know that the English as a second language programs actually increased and there is an additional evening, evening online program added. So kudos to that. I love that literacy and citizenship is championed here. I agree that assessing needs of patrons is really important and making sure that taxpayer, taxpayer dollars are being very well spent, especially in regard to future reserves for capital improvements and for our next generation. We want to keep our library great and there are so many collaborations and connections that we could do. And I'd like to be a part of that with my creative communication and also my multicultural.
Thank you, candidate Pye. Thank you. Candidate Johnin, excuse me. I will get this correct. I do apologize.
Thank you, Ms. Butler and the League for this opportunity. The library board trustee. The library board trustee acts as a steward of a beloved resource of our community. My reason for running for the library board has always been to help fulfill the mission of our library and to see it serve the needs of our residents. Ensuring our library is driven by sound policies and a fiscally responsible vision are keys to my approach. As both a father and a teacher, I am particularly concerned with making sure the library is seen by children as an inviting and useful space that provides a vast array of resources and programs. At the same time, changing demographics and changing technologies are certainly issues that remain priorities. Knowing how to better serve our residents is a priority of any trustee. And that begins with understanding the dynamics of the community we serve. As long as, as a longtime resident who has been active in a variety of community organizations, I believe as a trustee, I can speak for the residents of our township and am qualified to ensure that our library, one of the cornerstones of our community, continues to maintain reputation.
Thank you. Next, candidate Erin Flanagan-Davies.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all who were part of organizing this. I know it is not an easy thing to do and I appreciate your time and your talent. And I'd just like to say that I feel like our library is the core of our community and it should reflect all the needs of our patrons. And the needs of patrons continue to evolve. So I think being aware of that and promoting it is really giving the community exactly what it needs. It's really an exciting time for the library. We have a remodel going on. We just finished the first floor and we've got one going on for the second floor. And we continue to meet the needs and protect the safety of our patrons and our staff all the while moving forward with all the projects that will be ready for everyone when we get back to normal post-pandemic life. Thank you.
Thank you. And now candidate Anita Ford Scott.
Yes, thank you so much, everyone, for this morning's forum. I can tell you firsthand, being on the board as long as I have, that this current library board does an excellent job of serving our community. And we do have regular discourse regarding any of the policies and procedures that come before us. But I can assure you that your current library trustees will continue to work hard to guide the future of Schaumburg Township District Library with outstanding financial responsibility and appropriate policies and procedures, available technical advancements, beneficial programming for all patrons, an equity, diversity, and inclusion focus and implementation of innovative services. So I would greatly ask of our voters to please vote for myself, candidate Anita Forte Scott, my fellow colleagues on the board, David Jonin and Erin Flanagan-Davies, and any of the other outstanding ladies who have been a part of this particular election cycle this time. So thank you very much again.
Thank you. And candidate Emily Gilbert.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and Delta Sigma Theta Sorority for organizing this event and to Ms. Butler for moderating. I think we had some important discussions about library issues and it was great to see so much public engagement. Ultimately, I believe I would be an excellent trustee, given my education in library science, my decade of experience as a librarian, and my vested interest in the library as someone who uses and values this institution and wants to preserve it for the next generation. If I am elected, I will work to ensure our library remains one of the pillars of our community, an inclusive, welcoming space where residents can learn, search, meet, and discover. I've been attending board meetings regularly for over three years, so I'm well acquainted with the issues at our library and I'm ready to get to work for my community. I hope I can count on your support and I look forward to representing you on the board. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our candidates. And I, again, I apologize if I mispronounced your name. It was no, with no harm intent there. So we do want to, again, thank you on behalf of the Women League of Voters and Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We will now play the statement by Amy Mueller. This statement is limited to three minutes or equal to the time allowed it by our other candidates.
Objection, objection. There was nothing in the rule.
May I finish, please? May I finish, please, Mr. Olson? Thank you.
Just, so I wanted.
May I finish, please, Mr. Olson? May, may I finish, please, Mr. Olson?
Candidate Olson. Thank you.
So as I said again, thank you. And we will have a video statement played by Amy Mueller. Previously, it had stated that it was limited to three minutes, but as we know, our candidates had two minutes at the beginning. And so the video has been allowed at that time, which is also equivalent to the opening and closing statement. So at this time, if our technology person would play the video by candidate Amy Mueller.
Objection, there was nothing in the rules about a video.
We're not able to hear it from our tech. We still have no sound for the video? All right. So we would also like to remind our, our viewing audience that early voting will start soon this month and of course, the election is being held in April. We also would like to remind people that voting is important, not only on the national level, but your local level. So we encourage you to vote locally and of course, nationally. We're waiting for that video to get started up. Also remember that candidates and residents, you can recycle your yard signs after the election. And so you can go to the website for the League of Women Voters website for that information. Also, there's another event that'll be sponsored, held on March 15th. It is, Why Was Congress Parkway Named the Ida B. Wells Parkway? So come and find out at a special event co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters of the Palentine area and the Barrington area library and the NAACP of DuPage County. On March 15th, professor, historian, and author Michelle Duster, who is the great granddaughter of Ida B. Wells, will share the story of her illustrious ancestor and discuss her upcoming book, Ida B. the Queen. Visit the League of Barrington Library to register. And it looks like we are now ready for our video. There is still no sound. Right. I'd also like to remind our viewing audience and our participants, our candidates, that the Legal Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission is to help all citizens become better informed and educated voters. In addition to hosting candidate forums, they register voters year-round at community events such as the farmer's market and high school curriculum nights, and they welcome anyone interested in becoming a member. And we'll try the video again.
Hello, my name is Amy Mueller. I would like to thank the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority and the Illinois League of Women's Voters for hosting this forum and inviting me to speak. I regret that I cannot be on the live Zoom call today due to a prior commitment. I am the coach of York High School's mock trial team and the team is competing in the state championships today. I'd like to tell you a little about myself. My husband and I are lifelong residents of Hoffman Estates and are raising our three children in this community. As a high school teacher and parent, I understand the role community libraries play in people's lives. Libraries embody the best of our democracy and offer all members of the community a place to learn, gather, and explore. We are fortunate in Schaumburg Township to have a nationally rated five-star library serving our community, thanks in great part to the stewardship of the library board. I would be honored to serve the Schaumburg Township as a member of the library board with such competent members who are running alongside me in this election. The incumbents have a proven record of responsible financial management and an ability to craft and adhere to a mission statement that provides resources to all members of the community. Why would I be a positive influence on the Schaumburg Township District Library Board? Well, I'm currently enrolled in a Masters of Library and Information Science degree at the University of Missouri. This program gives me insight into the work that goes into making a library system responsive to the needs of its patrons. I believe that my experience and skill sets are uniquely suited to this position, which requires the board members to perform a number of duties. My educational background gives me insight on how to establish and evaluate the mission statement of a library. As a longtime community member, I am in a position to help evaluate the effectiveness of how well the library serves all members of the community. My coursework at Mizzou gives me an understanding of the behind-the-scenes management considerations of a public library so that I might intelligently communicate with the executive director. Why would I serve on the library board? Well, community service is at the heart of my desire to serve on the library board. I serve on the Hoffman Estates Arts Commission and am a founding member of the Illinois Mock Trial Coaches Association. As a member of these organizations, I can serve communities and causes that I'm passionate about. I would relish an opportunity to contribute to the continued successes of the Schaumburg Library. It would be a privilege to serve the Schaumburg Township as a member of the library board, and I ask for your support on April 6th by voting for Amy Mueller. Thank you.
As we bring this forum to a close, I want to thank the candidates for their participation. Let's see, do we have all of our candidates still on the screen? Appears that we've lost one. Okay. We would like to encourage all of our candidates, as I said earlier, to recycle their campaign signs and that members of the public can do that as well. Please visit the League of Women Voters Palentine area website for details. If you are not a registered voter, you can find registration information on the website as well. When you exit the forum, you should see a prompt for a brief one-minute survey. So please complete that, please fill out that form so we can continue to bring quality forms to you. If you have any concerns about anything that was said today in regards to the organization of the forum, that is your opportunity to do so. On behalf of the Schaumburg Hoffman Estates Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated and the League of Women Voters, we thank you for coming. And don't forget, early voting begins on March 22nd and there's plenty of election information available on the League of Women Voters website. Please participate in our democracy by casting your ballot. Your vote is your choice. And the survey will begin shortly. Thank you so much for all the participants.